All right, folks, I've got six o'clock. We want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Tonight, we've got a special board meeting, and we're going to start off a little bit unusual. Monday night is the reorganization meeting for the McDowell County Schools Board of Education. So at this time, we have Judge Ellen Shelley. She's a District forty-one court judge serving McDowell in Rutherford County. Judge Shelley, if you will come up, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you, and we'll just go ahead and kick this off. There you go. Yes, ma'am, come right in. I'll call them up. Mr. Jimmy Allison, Mr. Paul Baker, Mr. Greg Barksdale, Mr. Derek McGinnis, and Mr. Donnie Suddles, and if you would, bring the folks who are coming up with you.
I'm gonna step off to the side. I want y'all to stand in the middle, and you've got someone, are you holding the bottle or anything? I'm gonna try to stay out of the way. Get everybody situated, as long as everybody's been here for standing up here just a minute. I appreciate y'all letting me come. It's really one of the fun things that I get to do in my job is to swear into public service. I don't want to take too much time because it's not about me, it's about our school board members and our newly elected members, but just some notes on public service. It's, you spend a lot of time and effort getting to this point where you have longer an election process. Maybe it was just a primary, maybe it was both, and a lot of time and money and energy and engagement. And I always think it's so important to note that I want you to take that energy and that engagement that you worked so hard to use to get to this point, and make sure you're carrying that through to the end of your term. I think we put in so much energy and effort in just remembering that the community elected you, right? And you're here to serve that community and work politely and courteous with your board, but making those relationships through the school system, and that's just inside the classroom, administration, athletics department. I mean, I think you're, you extend beyond just the classroom and making those relationships and engagements that you worked so hard at the beginning when you decided to run, to carry that through and carry that through to the end of your term. They chose you because of your character and your beliefs and your stance that you got to make known to the community. And just because you're elected, those don't change. So you as a person and your character and your beliefs, they don't change just because you take this office. So just remember that. Remember you are who they chose for this job and to be that person that they chose to put here. And remember that it's always service above self, even when you're not in this room, in these meetings, making those really important decisions. You represent our community always, and everything you do going out in the community, that's just, that's who you are now. So it does change a bit, but it doesn't have to change who you are deep down. And I'm excited, those that are newly on the board or those that are continuing to serve, I think that's just such an important role that we collectively as public officials get the opportunity to be those leaders. Don't take advantage of it. Always make decisions not with your best interest in mind, but the best interest of your community, of your schools, your teachers, your staff, and everybody involved. Work hard to do no harm, right? So you not only want to do good, but you don't want to do bad, and that's just a very simple thing to think about. But just always putting yourself second at this point. So I'm excited for you to get to join into that role. I'm hopeful. I think it's such an important job through this board. One day, we've got kids that are gonna be you, you know, us. That's what they're gonna do. They're gonna have this volunteer opportunity and all of your day jobs, they're gonna strive to be who you are. And so setting up this great foundation for them to get to do that is so important. And I just am so thankful that you're willing to step in and use all of your, probably not extra time, but, you know, all of your time to do that for our community, and I just think that that's such a noble effort. And I really look forward to that adventure that you're gonna be on. It's certainly an adventure, and I hope you enjoy it and you engage in it, and I look forward to all the great things. So with all of that said, I'm ready to swear in, and here's how I suggest I go. I'm gonna have everybody please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Does everybody have a Bible? Everybody's situated? Okay. And I'm gonna go down the line. I'm not gonna make you repeat after me other than when I tell you to. And so I, and I'd like each of you to say your name separately, so I-
Greg Barksdale.
Jimmy Allison.
Paul Baker.
Donnie Suddles.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. So help me God, so do you.
I did.
I did.
I did.
I, please state your name individually.
Great question.
Jimmy Allison.
Paul Baker.
Donnie Suddles.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established from the government thereof. So do you.
I did.
I did.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God, so do you.
I did.
I did.
I, please state your name individually.
Great question.
Jimmy Allison.
Paul Baker.
Donnie Suddles.
Do swear or affirm that I will well and truly execute the duties of my office as a member of McDowell County Board of Education according to the best of my skill and ability according to law. So help me God, so do you.
I did.
I did.
I did.
Congratulations, Dr. McDowell. And I'm excited. We have a bit of a process. I think that, my understanding is that each of you will have the opportunity to address the room and the community here shortly. And I look forward to that, but we do have to sign your oaths. So it's a bit of a process. We've got to each sign twice. I like to do that individually because sometimes it's an important moment. You need to take the ceremonies when you can because there's gonna be really hard days when you come in this room sometimes. So when, take today as a celebration day when you're getting to start your adventure, and let's take the time. If you want photos with your families and photos while you're signing, I think that's such an important thing to do. It's a constant reminder as you can go back and look, you know, in several weeks or days or maybe hours. It just depends on how the meeting goes, at what, that you're signing that oath and that you're taking that so seriously and supporting that. So I think those pictures are so important for you to be able to go back and remember what you've sworn to do to the community, for the community and for our schools. So if y'all don't mind us taking just a minute to get those signatures, I would appreciate that. All right. We'll see the tabletop. Let's see. Are we okay over here? Or do you want us to go-
I can read.
Can I just, can I just do that?
I will happily be displaced.
And let me get you into position. All right. All right. I want you to be able to, you want a picture? You're gonna be difficult, aren't you?
I'm just, you want me over here?
I want you wherever you're going.
Is this, do I, do I need to go over here? Okay, I feel comfortable here.
Yes.
And I have two of these to sign.
You have two, and then I'm gonna sign behind you. And what I'll do is I'll have y'all sign, and I can sit over here and sign after everybody gets signature because I'm not, I'm not the important one that's not about me.
Just take mine.
Here, here. Keep this one.
Don't break it, guys.
Yeah, I did.
Good thing, too.
Remember that, just when you said that.
There's another one.
Well, we can do that.
Just, just, just.
We start.
Three, two, two, ladies.
Congratulations.
We got you.
You worked hard.
So great.
Parents are proud.
Your parents are proud.
Yeah, I can't forget you.
That's Jim again.
Newsprint.
Said no wrong, son, being here, brother.
At least, did I, last but not least, do you have? Congratulations, and I really, I'm so thankful that y'all let me do this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Shelley. All right, at this time, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the December second, Monday, twenty twenty-four, McDowell County Schools Board of Education meeting. It is a little unusual that I'm presiding over the meeting, but that's normally what happens in a reorganization, so I have to state that upfront. And it's also customary, one of the things that we've done in the past year is observed a moment of silence. Before we do that moment of silence, I would just, just, let's remember the season that we're in and remember what that means. And I would ask that we just take a moment of silence. I'm in. All right. At this time, we'll do our presentation of colors, and that's done tonight by the McDowell High School NJROTC.
Callers. Halt. Pride. Case. Peace, hands. Callers.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Can't pee. Callers. Ready, cut. Host. Callers. Ready, cut. Host. Port. Callers. Oh, hurry. Arch.
Thank you, folks. At this time, we'll need to do an approval of the agenda, entertain a motion. I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Have a motion by Mr. Suddles, or Mr. Schufert to- I'll second it. And a second by Mr. Suddles. All in favor? All right. At this time, we have a presentation from McDowell High School NJROTC team. Sergeant Miley?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, school board. If you're ready, for those who I haven't had a pleasure with, I'm First Sergeant Adrian Miley, Marine First Sergeant, who's been at McDowell High School for approximately seven months now. I just want everyone to know I'm also the world's okayest person at any fits here on time. I'm going to move on with that. Next week, we'll start the curriculum with how to use watches. If you could please bring your attention to the screens. We had the honor and pleasure of taking our students here from McDowell to DC. And this was significant because first, we wanted to reward our high return on investment candidates. We have some great potential in our schools, and we want to get that good federal funding back to those students who truly deserve it, and we can get some exponential growth. Next, we wanted to gain some lessons and inspiration from the elite Marine barracks Washington. They're an elite drill team, and they do great ceremony stuff all around the world all the time. We also wanted to show off some career opportunities that are seldom seen in McDowell County, and as well return to our school and community with some culture and knowledge. Lastly, we wanted to bolster our NJROTC mission of making better American citizens. So here you have some of our students. Some were here the club drive tonight. One of the first things we had to do is stretch our legs. You took the natural bridge. I have a degree in history. I couldn't help but hit this moment here for our candidates, the great scene there in Virginia. I'm sure some of us have been there. And everything, as I am a bit traveled for my career, had to take them to some fine dining, some DC Korean barbecue. One of my favorite moments from our students was, First Sergeant, I don't know if I'll ever get to eat like this again. And I said, I can't promise that, but we're going to do it tonight. Next, please. Here we have our students at Marine barracks Washington. This place is legendary. When the Brits came in the War of eighteen twelve, they burned the White House. They did not, they did not burn that white building you see in the picture, which is the Concomode House. That's how significant this place is in reverence to our nation's history. This was the main centerpiece of our field trip, the fact our students got to learn from elite Marines on how to do ceremony of guard and things like that. Next slide, please. We also had a special mission on behalf of the Cranford family from Burke County and some loved ones and family members nearby here in our county as well. We placed a pebble on behalf of the Cranford family. He was someone who passed away at the nine eleven attacks. So our students, leveraging some of my contacts in DC, I was able to get our students at the Pentagon Memorial. So this was a special thing. We had a moment of silence there for the Cranford family, for our neighbors, and personally delivered that pebble there. That has some beautiful red dirt from our local counties here on that pebble there. Next slide, please. And I obviously had to leverage my funny contacts. Please, you know what? I got our students inside the Pentagon. So they got a dime tour. They got to see places that people seldom see in the world's largest, you know, industry building in the DOD complex. But obviously, these are the few pictures that we could take given the security of the nature. But our students saw places like the basement of the Pentagon, four of the Pentagon. They walked by the tank. They walked by the chairman's joint cheese staff's office, things like that. And as you could see there, the bottom right-hand side, they got to see the inside of the Pentagon Memorial, which is actually a church. So some great stuff there. Obviously, some of our students having a great time there. One of them- So some great stuff there. Obviously, some of our students having a great time there, one of them, future candidate, as you can see. Next slide, please. And because we want to make good use of our time there, and keep in mind this trip was only two days, we couldn't help but take some of our students to the Holocaust Memorial Museum. Obviously, a great place there for reverence and historical significance there. So here you have some of our students seeing some of those exhibits. Next slide. And to exploit some of our contacts, what we're able to do is take our students to a very special venue, Topgolf. Have give some recreation, right? But also the gentleman to our back to us, and like I mentioned, part of our agenda, that gentleman there is with the Secret Service. So I had him speak with some federal agents, some things like that, let him know what possible reserve beyond account. So that was a huge piece there. Next slide, please. And ladies and gentlemen, that is it. As we checked our box in DC, we had to be, uh, want to be socialized and had to get some coffee in front of the White House. But I'd just like to point out thank you to McDowell County Schools for the support in our program. Thank you ladies and gentlemen for the time here this evening. Also like to point out, this was federally, not just federally funded, but it was also donated by our patrons, those to support our cause. Everything went to the fullest expense to include, we had such a great time with this, our students got so much from this. Even to the point, Topgolf, that was on MasterCard. That came out of our pockets because we really wanted our students to have such a great experience. They wanted for nothing. It was a great time. Thank you.
Sergeant Miley, I just want to thank you guys for the excellent job you're doing out there. And just so the folks out here know, you guys did a tremendous amount of work after the hurricane to make sure that our families have been well taken care of and numerous donations have came in just because of ROTC and your connections, and we certainly appreciate that and the work that you're doing to not only work with our students, but to support our community. Thank you.
Dr. Grit, is it possible to check into possibly anything they paid out of their pocket for us to reimburse them with anything on the trip in the future, just checking into that?
Yes, sir, and we can certainly do that. Thank you. Alright, the next thing on the, item on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. I'm going to read to you, I want to make sure we get this right. As the Superintendent of McDowell County Schools and Secretary to the McDowell County Board of Education, it is my official duty to preside over the reorganizational meeting of the board. The Chairman of the McDowell County Board of Education is elected at the regular December meeting of the board held on the first Monday of December and serves until December of the following year. So I just want to be clear, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this to you, then I'm gonna open the floor for nominations. At this time, we will begin nominating an election for the board chairman. There is no second needed, so no nomin- so the nomination itself will stand. If more than one person is nominated for office, voting will be done with a show of hands in order of the nomination until a majority is reached. I will note that we do have a quorum present tonight and that, and we have all nine board members with us. So at this time, I will open the floor to nominations.
Dr. Grit, I would like to nominate Mr. Terry Frank.
Thank you.
Sir, I'd like to nominate Donnie Settles, please.
Okay, if there are no further nominations, at this time, I will close the nominations. And we will vote in the order that they came in. So, all those voting in favor of Mr. Terry Frank, with a show of hands, please. Okay, that vote is unanimous. Mr. Frank, if you will, you can assume the chair, chairman role.
I feel very honored and I thank you very much, board, and looking forward to it. And I'm looking forward to a very transparent and all-inclusive year. And I'm, I'm very honored, to say the least. At this time, our election of the Vice Chairman, and I will entertain nominations for selection of Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Chuck Abernathy for Vice Chair.
Are there any further nominations? Having no further nominations, Mr. Abernathy, you are selected as Vice Chairman of the-
Thank you, sir.
-board. Item number eight on the agenda, board appointments. It is also customary for the reorganization board to appoint Secretary to the Board, who is the Superintendent, Dr. Tracy Grit, and Administrative Assistant to the Board, Ms. Becky Smith. And normally, uh, we, we take a nomination, I mean, we take a vote. No, no, not, no recommendations or anything, just all those that support Dr. Grit for Secretary of the Board, please raise your right hand. And all those that support Ms. Becky Smith for Administrative Assistant to the Board, please raise your right hand. And with that being said, we do affirm that they are the Secretary to the Board and Administrative Assistant to the Board. And Dr. Grit, item number nine, reaffirmation of North Carolina School Board Association Code of Ethics is yours.
Okay, folks, in your packet tonight, you should have a form in there for the Code of Ethics. And I'm gonna do the same as Judge Shelley did, I'll just read those here for you. I will need to have those signated and collected tonight, so if you will, if you will take, take care of those on, as we do this. As required by North Carolina general statutes, each board member is required to reaffirm the Code of Ethics for school board members and board member conflict of any interest on an annual basis. The Superintendent, that's me, will state, the following board policies were included in the electronic board packet and are posted on the MCS website under board policies. And those board policies are 2120 Code of Ethics for all school board members as required by General Statute 160-A-86 and General Statute 115-C-47 in parentheses 57. Board Policy 2121, Board Member Conflict of Interest as required by General Statute 14-234. A signature page with copies of each policy is located in a file folder at the member seat. Please sign the affirmation as record of the receipt of the policies which provide statutory guidance for the board member service of the Board of Education. Once you have signed those, you'll submit those to Ms. Smith. We can just pass them down? No, just the signature page.
Item number 10 on the agenda is Superintendent Remarks, and Dr. Grit, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Alright, I feel like it's been turned over to me all night, Mr. Frank, I'm glad to have you have it. December is a special time, not just for reorganization, but obviously, well, there's a lot of things going on with the holidays. I've got a few things I want to do, it's maybe a little unorthodox tonight, but I put some thought into this one. Tonight's a special night. The reorganization is a, is a chance for, you know, moving things in, in, in a straightforward direction and, and really advancing our district. And I'm excited about, I'm excited about what's to come in this district. So I'll start out with this, last week's Thanksgiving left us with many things to be grateful for in 2024. In late September and early October, as Helene ripped through our county, so many prayers were sent up and so many prayers were answered. We prayed for all of our students' staff's safety, not knowing was the hardest part of the storm. We couldn't communicate with one another to know if our loved ones were safe. We also couldn't contact our students and staff for several days. Of all of our many blessings, I am the most grateful this year for the answered prayers and keeping our students and staff safe. With November and Thanksgiving behind us, as we turn to December and the holiday season, we welcome four new board members, for football fans, this is the beginning of the middle eight theory. A few years ago, I began taking notice of the middle eight theory. And the more I have studied it, the more I've seen the impacts or the outcomes of the ballgames. Coach Bill Belichick coined the theory with the New England Patriots. Now, don't stop listening, I don't like Coach Belichick, nor the Patriots, but I do respect him. The theory is simple, the middle eight is the game within the game, and winning is important. It was so important that the FBS teams that won the middle eight went on to win the game nearly seventy-five percent of the time. That's quite a figure. Since Belichick introduced it, some of the greatest coaches in the college ranks have made a living following this theory. The middle eight is the last four minutes before halftime and the first four minutes after halftime. While other coaches were focused on getting into the locker room, content with a slight lead or retie, Belichick's theory pushed to score just before the half and then depending on who had the ball in the second half, score or shut them out on defense, essentially going up by two scores. The bottom line is that the most points scored during the middle eight often decided the game's outcome. Think about it. Even the fans get tired before halftime, usually taking a break for a snack or late back to their seat after standing in line for the restrooms. The atmosphere in the stadium seems less enthusiastic during the middle eight. From the school's perspective, we are entering the middle eight in McDowell County Schools in twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And I look back to my principals, we had this conversation last year, they remember this. We are proud of our first semester accomplishments and our teachers have led the charge to empower our students with the confidence to tackle great things despite having a setback from the effects of Helene. In the first half of this year alone, we have had a national blue ribbon school, state and regional competition success, and an opportunity to lead several state level organizations. We also opened the Summit Academy and increased the teacher coaching, teacher and coaching supplements. We also hosted the National Teacher of the Year at our convention. Our team had so many small victories and incredible milestones this year in what's become a great first half. The small victories and significant gains led to our team's excellent showing for anyone keeping score in the first half. As we enter the middle eight, and I call December kind of the middle eight beginning, as we enter the middle eight, carrying this momentum into halftime is essential as a district. A few minutes ago, we welcomed new members, Mr. Jimmy Allison, Mr. Paul Baker, Mr. Greg Barksdale, and Mr. Derek McGinnis as part of the McDowell County Schools team. This group, with our standing members, will help us carry the momentum into Christmas break, or what football fans call halftime. Getting a great start to the next semester is critical. And to do this, just as we did in the first half, we are going to need the support of our community. We encourage you to get behind our Titans of Education and help us move those chains. Now, as excited as I am to get about the holidays and enjoy some good quality time watching football, I want to usher you back to the comments made at the beginning of this report about how many answered prayers and to remind us the reason for the season. Folks out there, from my family to yours, we wish you a very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Dr. Grit, I'm sure everybody on the board would like to express their sincere blessings to you and your family at Christmas. I know I do, and I think everybody probably on the board would like to do the same.
Thank you.
Got the opportunity, Grit, can you start?
Yep, I'm sorry if it can't hear you.
Go ahead. Wish his family Merry Christmas.
Oh, yes, I wish y'all, everyone here, Merry Christmas. And just having a, I hope this will be a wonderful year for everyone. During this time, I know we'll have some tough decisions to make. And one thing that I've wanted, is this appropriate to talk about some of the things now? One thing that I wanted to get out there, I know that this is a very unusual board meeting due to the fact that we've been running without a chairman. So there's some different issues that we have to address with how, what was put on the agenda and stuff like that. And as y'all know, throughout the time I was running for this office, I had a deep concern regarding the inappropriate materials available to the minors in our local school system. As parents and community, community members, we are entrusted, we entrust our children to the school system to ensure a safe and nurturing learning environment. It was disheartening to learn that the environment is being compromised by content that is not in line with our community values and beliefs. The school board has a vital responsibility to represent the interests and values of the local community it serves and to abide by North Carolina law and not the values projected through a worldly lens. This responsibility includes ensuring that the materials used in our schools are appropriate and aligned with our shared vision for education. Our duty is not to the adults in this community who legally, and I want to say that loudly, who legally should be able to read and purchase books that contain any type of material they see fit. Rather, I strongly believe that it is our duty and the sole responsibility of the McDowell County School Board to follow the moral compass set by the majority of the parents and citizens in our community and remove any books or materials that are graphic in content. This school board is responsible, or our, the school board members are responsible for our children and not allowing them to be hypersexualization in, in the school systems. At this point, I would, I have a prepared motion, but being that this is a strange environment right now with how the board is, is the largest number we've had sworn in, I'd like to make a, a motion that you've put on the agenda for the next meeting in January for us to discuss this motion and go forward with the vote.
Mr. Barksdale, we won't make that a motion, but we will definitely put it on, look at that in our January meeting. And at that time, we will handle that issue and decide what we need to do about it. That's fair with you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Uh, no.
Hey, I just want to say welcome to you four guys. We're now mostly guys, except for myself. But I wish everybody out there a very, very blessed holiday season. Dr. Grit's right in that we all have so much to be thankful for.
Thanks for being here this evening and, and my congratulations to the new members of the board. It'll be a pleasure to, to serve with you, I'm sure. And all the members of the community that are present and not present, I'd like to wish you a very Merry Christmas and a blessed New Year. And thank you for continuing to support me and as part of this board.
Thank you for your confidence, and I want to wish everybody a- Thank you for your confidence, and I want to wish everybody a very Merry holiday season, and we just need to remember the reason for the season.
Mr. Allison, pull your mic down because this is recorded and.
I'm supposed to remember what I said.
I'd just like for everybody's vote of confidence in us, and we'll do the very best we can. And I want us all to remember the reason for the season, and we'll all be fine.
I'd like to say thank you to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the reason for the season. I'd like to say thank you, Dr. Greit. I have been amazed at the leadership that he has shown forth here through all the problems that we've had in Hurricane Helene and, and other things that have come up. And we appreciate that and your leadership. We appreciate the leadership of this board in the past. And I'd like to say Merry Christmas to all of you, and may God bless each and every one of you and us and help us to, to do what's right for our children, for our faculty, for all, all, all the people that work in this system. And I thank God for you. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Allison, it's taken me two years to figure the microphone out, so you'll, you'll get the hang of it. I do want to congratulate all of the, all of the board members, look forward to working with, with the new members. Would like to wish staff, Dr. Greit, and all of our school employees a Merry Christmas. All of the board members a Merry Christmas, and thank you very much for being here this evening.
I'd like to thank McDowell County for putting their trust in me. I do not take it lightly. I will strive every time I sit in this chair to work with these folks to do what's best for our children, what's best for our schools, what's best for our teachers. I want everybody to know that if you work for this school system, you won't be forgotten by this board. We will have your best interest at the forefront of everything we do. I thank God for his many blessings and miracles that he brought us through, what he just brought us through. And I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a very happy and safe and healthy New Year. Thank you.
I want to say thank you too, and congratulations to the new board members. It is going to be a pleasure working with you. We are very gifted. I know that myself. When I look at myself each and every day, I know how blessed I've been and the people that's been in my life to, to help me get to where that I am. I want to reiterate what Judge Shelley said, and that's during this job, be true to yourself. Don't lose that inside yourself because when I sit here each and every night, I think about that, what are, what are my true beliefs? What, what's in the best interest of the kids? And I couldn't go outside my late grandfather Fred Brown, he always guides me. You know, my Lord and Savior guides me and my grandfather guides me too. And I think that's one of our biggest things is, you know, in going in the future, that parents, we need to reiterate, instill that in our kids. And if we can do that, it makes our job a lot easier and teachers' jobs real easier. But again, Merry Christmas to everyone. I guess in the words of Tiny Tim, God bless us each and everyone. And my wife's already left, so I was going to thank her and get some extra points, but she left, so I can't do that.
She still watches.
Oh, she watches, yeah, that's true. So again, congratulations. Look forward to it. Love each and every one of you, love the community, and we'll continue to work hard for you.
I want to clarify something for Ms. Hounds. You're the only female, but I'm gonna tell you something. You're a very great person, and we're, we're gonna put you in a position where you're gonna shine, to say the least. And we, we're, we're honored that you're part of this board, I'm telling you. And we'll, we'll make sure that we don't leave you out of anything. Mr. Hill, can you follow that act, sir?
I thought I could, but I'm not so sure.
Our teacher representative, Mr. Joey Hill, we, we appreciate you, sir.
Let me continue in the same general vein and welcome our new board members on behalf of the faculty and staff of all of our schools and. That's not what he meant when he said shine. Not that you need his or anyone else's permission to do that, but anyway. I'd like to welcome all of you to the board and say on behalf of the faculty and staff that we're very much looking forward to working with you as colleagues who respect and trust one another and are open to each other's ideas. I think that together we can make great things happen for this school, this, at the school district, for all of our students and everyone involved and invested in it. I'd like to say too, to everyone here and to everyone watching out there in the, in cyberspace, the happiest of holidays. I know that we've mentioned the reason for the season several times, and you know, there are multiple reasons. This year, my dog's birthday and Thanksgiving coincided on the same day, and I think that that should get special recognition. So let's hear it for my dog. I'm kidding. All right. This week, we'd like to, this, this month, I'd like to cast a spotlight, bright and glaring, on our middle schools, West McDowell and East McDowell. And before I begin with the presentation proper, let me make it clear to my two friends back there surrounding my third friend. Despite my Spartan pedigree, and it is a pedigree, I chose a neutral color for this presentation. I think this is the color that you get when you cram orange and blue together. So here we are. Let's begin with West. Like everyone in our district, West McDowell faculty and students continue both to build and avail themselves of community and resilience in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. Science teacher Mrs. Susan Higdon puts a fine point on the reality of life at West. She says, "The biggest thing I think of is how we came together as a school and community to support and help each other during the Helene hurricane. These efforts are still ongoing with our students and our community." And congratulations are in order to Mrs. Higdon, who was recently invited to participate in the STEM network. Donna Pyatt's, Donna Pyatt's, that beautiful woman to the right, who is my sister. The best teacher in the family, right? Donna Pyatt's seventh grade science students received a visit from Daniel Crowley, a weather forecaster. Thanks to Mrs. Pyatt and Mr. Crowley for sharing the wonder of weather with our students. West McDowell students competed at the Future Business Leaders of America Regional Competition. Congratulations to these students for their hard work and their victories. We have Logan Reese, who won first place in financial literacy, Andrew Allison, first in career exploration, Maddie Woolart, third in mission and pledge, Lucas Wassman and Kaylee Allison, honorable mention for spirit shirt design, Carson Buchanan, honorable mention for web banner design, Landon Leitner and Jonathan, Jonathan Wallace, excuse me, Jonah Wallace, honorable mention for spirit cheer or chant. During the Veterans Day program, West McDowell students presented poems and information about each branch of service. The eighth grade ROTC students presented flags, and the band played anthems for each branch of service. Brace yourselves for this one. West has a new Spartan mascot, thanks to the efforts of eighth grader J.C. Carter. And what a handsome fellow he is. Now let's hear about East McDowell Middle School. Principal Tracy Winman says, and I'm sure she's completely objective in her assessment, that the faculty and staff at East McDowell Middle School are simply the best. They are working together best to meet every student's academic, behavioral, and social emotional needs. Let's hear about how this amazing faculty does just that. At East McDowell Middle School, all students just completed presenting their electronic portfolio of learning via student-led conferences. Sixty-five percent of families came to school to hear their students present their learning. East is thankful for a partnership with McDowell Early College and McDowell Academy of Innovation, who provided student leaders to help facilitate student-led conferences for the remaining thirty-five percent of our student body. At least twice every week, this is the second bullet point, at least twice every week, students who do not need academic interventions, visit students with special needs and self-contained classes to read with those students and model appropriate social behavior. This is one of Ms. Winman's favorite things to be part of. Life at East is very busy, even after school. East just started winter sports. Each day after three-thirty, you will find basketball, wrestling, and cheer practice. But sports aren't the only thing happening after school. East Lego Robotics Table were built by Mr. Ramsey's class at MHS. The Lego Robotics Team will be traveling to Charlotte in early December to complete an official Lego, Lego Robotics competition. This competition was supposed to be held at East. However, Hurricane Helene negatively impacted the number of teams that were able to travel, and a minimum of twelve teams attending the Lego Robotics Competition is a requirement. There are not twelve teams in the western portion of the state that are able to travel, so East will join FCS to travel to Charlotte for the Lego Robotics Competition. East Science Olympiad Team is preparing for this year's Science Olympiad Competition, which will be held in Hickory. And this year, East is offering an after-school art club via a community partnership. After school, the art room is full of amazingly creative students having fun creating masterpieces. In addition, East hosts YMCA after-school program that is free of charge to any East McDowell student. This program provides daily fun and tutoring to students. East teachers provide the tutoring service, and students who attend this program have an opportunity to receive over an hour of tutoring daily. This program operates until six P.M. Principal Winman says, "Our Trojan leaders are consistently planning ways to help our school community, and this makes my heart happy." They currently have plans to host a one-dollar PJ Day to raise enough money to buy Thanksgiving meals for families in need. How'd that go? Thought so. All right. East McDowell Middle School had an amazing Veterans Day program that included a performance by the band and a small ensemble of staff members. Mrs. Carson was the guest speaker. And East Middle Band students are busy preparing for their winter concert. The sixth graders are making music, not just noise. The legendary broadcaster and author Earl Nightingale said, "The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams." Thank you, faculty and staff of East and West McDowell Middle Schools, for teaching our young people to believe in that beauty.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Ms. Smith, do we have any correspondence? Okay, thank you. Do we have any requests addressable? Item number fourteen, unfinished business. Dr. Greit, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
I'll just change places. It might feel a little better to stand up for a minute, right? Folks, we're glad to have you out here tonight again. Just wanted to give you an update on where we are. Normally, I include a lot of photos, but in this report, I don't have as many photos for you. But the one I do wanted to include was, we didn't have the TV in the last time, and, and I want to talk to you a little bit about what's going on in the locker room there. I think you have one other photo. There it is. So that's important, what's going on with the facilities. One, the locker room just looks fantastic. The kids, the basketball kids are really, really happy with it. And the other two, the other thing with this that I want to point out, which is, which is awesome, is the huddle cam that's actually, when you're, next time you're in the gym, if you look up near where the banners are, you'll see a little growing, glowing green light up there. That huddle cam is videoing our student, or our student athletes as they're playing ball. The beauty behind this is that can quickly be put on the TV for the coach and, 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 you know, they can go back and watch a play within minutes. I talked to Coach Franklin the other day. He was downloading stuff, and within a minute, he had, he had plays that he was able to show. Hey, look, you were out of place right, right here. I mean, you just, there's just some major technology going on there. We're excited to have that. It really brings us into the twenty-first century. You know, after, after almost twenty-five years, we're still saying that, but I guess we'll keep saying it for a little while. But I, I'm really proud of that work, and I think the, the student athletes are just absolutely loving it. And, and they're, they're excelling on the court out there as well. Those are really the only pictures I had for you tonight. Unfortunately, we've had some, some, some issues with some bowlers, and you know, that, that's kind of lackluster TV. I mean, putting up pictures of bowlers doesn't really do any justice to that. But I, but I want to talk to you about where we are with our facilities and, and kind of just get you caught up. Obviously, the elephant in the room is always the Old Fort and PG with as much damage as we had at Old Fort. I will say this, the grass is growing back in the front lawn. It looks beautiful. It's growing again in the rear. Just, just to see grass growing there when you drive by at night and to see the lights on, and folks, it's, it's still the only light that's on. So there's a beacon, I hope, there, and that remains to be that way. The biggest news to report, Mr. Abernathy, I think you'll find this one particularly important, that comes from an engineer on site in Old Fort who reported to the county that they can handle our wastewater. I think that was some of the biggest news that we got last week. So that means when we're ready to reoccupy that building, they do feel like that they're able to meet those specifications. So that was one topic that had came up in the last, I don't know, really the last three weeks or so, that there were some significant concerns about whether that would be, you know, a situation that would give us issues down the road. So I'm happy to report that. I'm also happy to report that the sampling of the, of, in the gym for the moisture, if you'll remember, one of the reasons that we were, we were kind of behind a little bit on getting some things going in that building was because we needed to make sure that the moisture content was down. Today, the company that's supposed to be doing the hardwoods, they came to do those sample tests. So we hope to have some reports back for you guys in the coming weeks on that. The heat is on in, in the building. The HVAC contractors are reinstalling insulation on the ground floor units, and, and folks, if you remember, those were the units when we walked through that were pulled out in the hallway. Nearly all of them were affected by the water. We do have damage to five of those motherboards, and we've still not gotten five of them started. But we are holding a pretty constant warm temperature in the building, and that, that's a positive. So that's, I, I feel like our moisture readings are going to be close, if not there. So we still have more work to be done there, and we'll continue working on that. We also installed heat tape and cover for the open exposed pipes outside. So if you remember on the cafeteria side of that building, there were some exposed pipes. There, there was what, you know, a doghouse box, is what you call them, that covers that, that area over. They, they put the heat tape on it and, and were able to keep it from freezing. With the frigid temperatures that we're having right now, that was one of the key things as well. Last week was, was not as big of a week for Old Fort, just to be completely honest with you. Our, our team was preparing for what we hope to be coming at, at Pleasant Gardens. But this week, they're, they're back on it hot and heavy, so they'll be hauling dirt, and they'll resume that. I just want to remind the board, that is one hundred percent recoverable time when our folks are working in that capacity. So that is something we can turn in and submit to FEMA when it comes to moving that dirt. So that's, that's, it's advantageous for us to do that. It, it helps cover some of those fees and salaries as well. The biggest thing we have to do is we have to have a GPS coordinate on where every, every square foot of that dirt goes. Mr. Shrink's is, is doing that. I also spoke with him, and he's able to keep up with it through the general work orders that he, he issues each day. So he's got good track record of that. And we're continuing to have our disaster recovery meetings each week. We will continue to host, have those, and that is Mr. Shrink's, Ms. Rampy, and myself. And we sit down and, and really look at where we are each week on, on the, for FEMA status. Ms. Rampy will be able to give you just a little bit of an update on where we are on some of the financials for that as well. Moving into Pleasant Gardens, I will tell you, I was a little disappointed. The mobile units were, were slightly delayed. We were expecting those to be on the road today. They told us today that they would be on the road Tuesday, so I was definitely disappointed by that. The, the mobile units will be here on Tuesday. The bathrooms that are also attached to that, they are scheduled for December the nineteenth. That still allows us the time. We're still within our window to get that work done. I wanted to have a little more time. I wanted the extra week, just to be honest with you, in case we had any weather issues. And also, it, it ends up pulling folks off to try to get things done in a hurry instead of allowing them enough time. But we, we do feel like we're still on track there. It's definitely getting a little tighter as far as getting them in by the end of the, by, by January. So I mentioned to you that we had some issues with some bowlers. So last week, we lost a bowler at Nebo Elementary. So, last week, we lost a bowler at Nebo Elementary School. It was down for two days. We hired contractors to help with this project. It was, it was quite a feat that they were able to get the, get that repaired and back up and running. That was one where the system had a significant leak, and they didn't want to bring the system all the way down and have to bring it up, so they were able to keep the heat in the building while they got the bowlers repaired. So, great job there. Sometimes that does happen, but that was a serious, a serious issue. And behind the scenes, Mr. Shrink's and his team, by getting those folks on-site, was, was a big help. This week, early head start, we've lost a heater there, and they are to receive a complete change in service. For the time being, supplementary heat is in place. Everything has been ordered for that. There's definitely a concern there as far as where the temperatures are and making sure that we're getting, getting heat in that building. So, that's just a, a situation where we had a, a downed, down unit, and we'll be working on that. New insulation on the cooling towers. So, if you'll remember, we had some newer cooling towers, North Cove and, and West Marion, that have been updated. So, the insulation on those cooling towers, we contracted with the company to come out and, and do that. So, that way, that those, those towers outside won't freeze and burst on us. And the, the last thing I want to report tonight is I'm happy to report that we have five new buses at the garage, and they're ready to hit the road. We have three more on the way this year, so we have a total of eight new buses. We also, with the buses that we got last year, and the buses that we're scheduled to be getting in the next year, we have quite a, we're going to have quite a new, quite a few new buses on our fleet. Mr. Spavy, I know that that makes you happy. You had the one that backfired sometimes occasionally and put out a puff of smoke before it took off, but I'm, yep.
It would, it would run great when it ran.
There you go. That was one of the ones that, that was scheduled to be replaced, and I, and I think I've already shared with you the three that we had at Old Fort that were total losses. Those buses were also included in, in that replacement, so. I'll take any questions if y'all have them.
Dr. Greit, do we have any cameras on the new buses? Any of the new buses have cameras?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Dr. Greit, one question that was asked of me the other day, and I was not sure. Is the county or the school system responsible for any percentage of the recovery cost for these damages, or is FEMA taking care of 100%?
So, that's a great question. The only thing that we were going to be under was going to be the deductible for that. Then FEMA will pick up the deductible. We found that out in a meeting, so that piece will be covered. And what's beyond that, the state of North Carolina put out a $50 million, there's $50 million out there that school districts can't access. I'll be honest with you, Mr. Barksdale, I'm not sure that we will actually have an opportunity to access that, because I do believe that our insurance first will cover, FEMA will cover second. There, there may not be any, any need for, for that. We're very fortunate. First, we're very fortunate to have had flood insurance on the damages. We're also very fortunate, and I don't want to steal Ms. Rampy's thunder, but she'll share that we've received a few grants already to help offset some of our costs. So, you know, it's one of those that, until it all shakes out, you really don't know. Unfortunately, I've heard from districts that have dealt with FEMA in the past, and it may be as many as three, or four, or five years before the, the funding does come in. But we do, we do anticipate that, that there will be funding there for it. But again, we're fortunate that our deductible is at that level. It's a great question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right. Thank you, folks.
Before I get on to the financial transparency part, I wanted to go over just a quick update on FEMA. Basically, Dr. Greit gave you the update, but I did talk with FEMA right before the meeting started, and we are scheduling meetings for our discovery scoping. Basically, that's where we can start getting our disaster inventory together. So, again, we'll be giving them a list of anything that we have that's out of pocket that insurance does not cover. I do feel pretty confident in our representative and, and our contacts with FEMA. They seem to be very supportive. So, at this time, as far as with the school system, we've got good support, both from the state insurance that we have and with our FEMA representative. We've also received a couple of grants. We received a child nutrition grant of a little over $74,000, and that's to offset cost where we paid staff, but we did not have revenue for child nutrition. So, the staff was paid to work, but there was no meals served for nine days. And because of that, the state has calculated our average revenue and helped us offset that cost for our child nutrition program. They'll also be coming back to offset some of our costs where any of our food that was lost because of the power outages, or any food that we had to move at that time. So, that's been beneficial.
Ms. Rampy, if I can just add to that, I, I, we need to give a shout-out to John Haynes and what he did during the hurricane time. He was able to maneuver a lot of our food and, and keep it from defalling. So, we, we saved a tremendous amount of food. But what food we, we, and I won't say we weren't going to save it, but what deftled anyway, John was able to get it out to the kitchens, and that food was prepared for many of the workers that were working at the EOC and different places. They were, they were using some of the food that, rather than us lose it, they were able to prepare it. And the, the, the beautiful thing about it is we've recu, we will recover that and, and then some in this situation. So, just really proud of John and his team for all the work that they did to make sure that we recovered a lot.
Absolutely. It was very, very beneficial for the community, and we're going to be offset for the cost. We also received a mental health grant for a little over $113,000 to help with any kind of mental health related to the disaster. So, we will be working on a plan with those funds as well. We've received a $25,000 just for relief, for disaster relief as well, so we'll be using some of that, and then some additionally, some other mental health funds as well. So, we are getting some funds in to help offset any of our costs, and then also to add some services for our mental health. So, that's been great. All right. So, the other thing I wanted to talk about is, we have changed, and we have, I've talked about it several times, about the financial transparency page. Part of this used to be in the board packet, and we decided about a year and a half ago to put it on the website that it, so it would be available whenever you needed it, so you could look at previous months, previous years, and also it would be available for the community. So, I just wanted to go over a couple of those. I'm not going to get too in the weeds, but if you guys have any questions, just stop at me, and we can get in, much in the weeds as you want to, because that's my niche. So, just let me know. So, we are going to go to, if you're on the main McDowell webpage, if you go onto Departments under Financial Transparency, and then go down, you can see there's three sections there. The first section I'm going to show you is the, the old financial reports that used to be in the board packets. If you click on that, that's updated monthly. So, if you click on the 24, 25, that would show you for each month where we're at. That would show you update budgets that's been approved by the board, how much we've sent, spent out of that pot of money, and the percentage that we've spent. Now, granted, it's a, you know, school budgeting is different. It's fluid, so we're getting pots of money in and out a lot throughout the year, but this is as of, basically, this one is as of November 30th. So, you can see, we're about, as far as teachers, we're about four months into the year, because you've either been paid August, September, October, November. So, we should be around 40%. And you can see that top line, classroom teachers, right-hand line, we're at 39.29%, and that's position allotments. And again, I won't get into the weeds on that, but that just is, anytime you want to see how much we're spending or any of our pots of money, this is straight from our financial software. And you can see at the top, there's a tab per month, so if you ever wanted to compare tabs, you can go to different tabs and then look at, compare that. And if you go back out, you can look at other years. If you wanted to look at November from last year and compare it to this year, you're welcome to do that. I don't know if anybody but me wants to do it, and maybe Chuck, but, but you're welcome to do that. The other thing is the audit reports. Those, we keep at least five years of audit reports on there. So, that's the audit report from the board, and it also shows our audited approved financial statements from the LGC. So, if you'll just click on one, it doesn't matter which one. So, there's a scanned copy of the certified audit report for the last five years. I will say that we sent our audit report last week to the LGC. So, as soon as that is approved, we will present that to the board the subsequent month. So, that should be coming. Would be great if it's in January, but we'll see how fast we get that approved from the LGC. Okay, if you'll go back. Also, on there is ABC transfers. This is a little bit in the weeds, but if you ever wanted to click on that, that basically shows any transfers that the board has approved through a budget amendment, but also where we have transferred funds within, like state or federal. So, if we had to transfer out of one pot of money to another one, we have to report those to the state, and by law, we have to have these on our financial transparency page by October 15th every year from the previous school year. All right? And at the very top, you'll see school expenditure data there. That is the DPI website. So, if I click on statistical profile, statistical profile, and then on the left, you'll see financial information. This has a lot of information. I'm not going to go through every bit of this, but if you'll look at, for instance, Table 24, this is a good one to look at. I'm going to go down. Right. So, there we are at 590, and I don't have my glasses on, but you can see that our state per pupil, how much we spend is, let me get in there, I have a computer on screen, so sorry. It's $9,109 we spend a state per student, and that's about 40 per student a state, and federally, we spend about 2,300, that's 70 a state. And then, if you look at local, though, we spend about a little over $2,000 per student, that's 90 a state out of 116. So, there's a lot of information in there. I said I won't get in the weeds, but here I am, under the dirt. But there's a lot of information that you can dig into, and it has every school system in the state and how we compare to them, if you're ever interested. Or you can just come see me, and I can get real excited and show you a bunch of graphs and all kinds of things you want to see. But I just wanted to, for the new board members, but also the ones that have been here, just remind you where that information is, or if you need anything from me. I can get it for you, and I can get you a bound copy of the audit report, whatever you need.
Ma'am, just real quickly, for our new members here tonight, tell them what our annual budget is, basically.
Generally, it's around $65 million on a, on a non-COVID, a non-hurricane year.
And also, what percentage do we receive federally, state, and local?
Off the top of my head, it's about...
Yeah, yeah, not dollar-wise, just, just percentage.
It's around 10% for federal, sometimes eight, it depends on how many grants we have, about 11% for local, and 76% is state. And then some of that other will be miscellaneous grants that we get that might flow through. Again, that's off the top of my head. I'll give you some exact numbers.
Does it, do any of the new folks have any questions they want to ask her concerning finances while she's up there? Or Mr. Abernathy?
Yeah, just, I hate to put more work on you, but I really appreciate your coming in here and doing this, and I would, maybe not 12 times a year, but I like seeing you up here and, and giving us, giving us an overview. What you have to do and what the superintendent has to do is repeatedly help us gain knowledge about the financial aspects of it, and I, I appreciate the presentation.
No problem. And also, if there's a, anything targeted specific other than a general, then I, you know, just let me know. It'd help me if there's a specific thing you would like to look at other than a general. And also, we can do this in the Finance Committee as well. I don't know who's going to be on the Finance Committee, but any, you know, whatever you guys want to go into detail. Sounds good.
Thank you. I would never miss an opportunity to remind folks, we're about 85% salaries with our, with our budget. That is one thing, I think it's important to keep that piece in mind. All right, next up, we've got Ms. Crystal Hamby, Assistant Superintendent for Learning. She'll be talking about the low-performing schools and the improvement plan. Just as a reminder, folks, we started this work back in the November meeting. Those plans were presented, and they had to be present for a certain amount of time, and we've, we've, this is the second meeting that they have been on, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman of the Board, members, welcome. Congratulations to our new members, and it's a blessing to see y'all all here tonight. So, tonight, we present the school improvement plans for your review and approval for three schools who have currently been identified by the state as low-performing. Each school improvement team and staff have developed these plans collaboratively, focusing on key areas requiring growth and targeted strategies to address them. The aim is to ensure measurable progress in student achievement and overall school performance. In your packet tonight, you have received a summary of each of the school's plans for your review. Each plan outlines specific goals, strategies, and a timeline for implementation. With your approval, these plans will serve as the foundation to drive meaningful improvement and meeting the needs of our students and school community. Tonight, we respectfully seek your approval for the plans that were submitted for review.
Okay, as Assistant Superintendent Ham, Hamby has mentioned, they were in our board packet, and I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look over them. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the low-performing school, and I hate to use that word, improvement plans, because none of our schools are low-performing, in my opinion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the plans.
We have a motion to accept the school improvement plans from Mr. Suddles and a second by Mr. Barksdale. Is there any further discussion on the school plans?
Just, just a quick comment. It would be nice for me to see, maybe, again, here I go again, every month or every other month, an update on the steps that have been taken...
Yes, sir.
...by those schools, because performance really is, I think, what we hear about and what, why we're here, and it's really important to us. So, it would be nice to have that updated.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Greit, could you explain to the new members also referencing growth, or is that going to come later?
No, no, I'm happy to do that. I think it's, it's important to, to note that there's two, there's two measures. There's proficiency and, and there's a growth measure. Proficiency would be how many of the students in, in said class passed the exam with a three, four, or five. The, the thing about proficiency is it, it, it basically looks at one sliver of time, and that's the test. So, your school, and that is a grade, a school grade, just like any other grade would be, based on how many of those kids were proficient on the test. Growth, on the other hand, looks at where a kid started and where a kid ended. So, to, to keep this really, really simple, let's say a student who's entering the third grade was reading on a first-grade level. I think that's important that you think about it from that perspective, and we do have. Unfortunately, not all of our students come to us prepared for school, and not all of our students grow at the same, same rate. So, that student who enters first, or enters third grade that's still reading on a first-grade level, they're two years behind. What growth looks at is how much that teacher grew that student within that one full year. So, in, in, in that, we always want to have more than a year, because obviously, you, the goal is to get the student caught up. And we've got to think about education as a continuum. This is a multiple-year process, beginning in our early head start, our pre-K programs, going all the way through the 12th, and at the early colleges, the 13th grade. So, our goal as a district is to always achieve growth, and not just growth, but we want to not only meet, we want to exceed growth, because when we're exceeding growth with our students, if you think about it, take that student who I said was reading on a first-grade level, and we measure a year and a half worth of growth, that was incredible. That is a great amount of work that that teacher did to get that child to reading at the second grade and a half mark. So, they've grown more than a year, so they grew a year and a half within one school year. Uh, they... There are metrics out there that, that measure growth. And unfortunately, when you do proficiency and you just look at the test scores, you don't get to see the major growth that our students made. And I think that's important. And from the teacher's perspective and from the principal's perspectives, I see you guys back there with heads shaking. When you sit down and you see that a kid made a year and a half worth of growth, unfortunately, they didn't, they didn't pass the exam at the end. We know we have more work to do. But from the student's perspective and from the teacher's perspective, that is a huge celebration. And I think we've got to keep that peace in mind. Our, our job is to grow every student every day, and that's the goal. And not just in a day, but in, over the course of the year, we want to exceed growth. Thank you, Mr. Barksdale, for bringing that point up. But that's my soapbox. If you can't tell, I can get pretty worked up about it. And I think that if, as an administrator, our administrators are definitely right there with us. We get excited about that. And Mr. Abernathy, we do look at those growth measures on a daily basis. We've got folks out there that are working with our principals in PLCs, and they're measuring our kids on a daily and weekly basis, looking to see how much growth they're making. And I'm proud of that work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me say this too, for the, for the new board members too. It's always easier to understand if you're taking visits to those schools and just see kind of what's going on and ask those questions inside the school. I'll tell you something that I've realized and seen here recently from my time in the classroom, I think we have maybe two that have been teachers on the board. What I have realized now with my college kids, my players, it's much more difficult to teach, to say the fundamentals of hitting a softball or a baseball, whatever you want to call it, because kids these days have so many more mental challenges with the things that we've faced over the last five years. So they've got something, you think they're understanding you, but something else is going on in their brain. And I have noticed that more from my time in the classroom, you know, in the early two thousands to now, and how things have changed. So the testing, the grading and stuff right now, to me, North Carolina should have kind of thrown it out the window and really thought about what's going on in these kids' heads, because they're facing a lot more challenges mentally with some of the things they've seen. So the testing and stuff, yes, growth, we want them to grow. But we also got to know that our teachers are doing what they're supposed to to try to get that mental part handled as well as create that growth. And I think that's sometimes what we miss, because we just see papers and scores and everything else. I see kids that are unbelievably kind-hearted kids, that would do anything for you, run through a wall for you, but they don't understand certain things or they can't stay focused. So I think, you know, just the new board members, the more you can get into a classroom and see what's going on with this youth today and stuff. My kids are grown now, but I can listen to my wife tell me all the stories every night. So, but just want to encourage you to get in the classrooms.
That's a point well made, and we appreciate that, Mr. Suddles. Is there any further discussion on the motion on the school improvement plans? With no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the school improvement plans, certifiably raising your right hand. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item under new business is going to be presented by Mr. Abernathy. And Mr. Abernathy, I want personally say I, I thank you for researching this, and I, I think it's going to be a great thing. It's not something we're going to do tonight, but over a period of time, I think we can come up with a very good way of doing this. And so I'm going to turn it over to you, sir. You, you might want to come up here.
Do I have to?
You don't have to.
Now, if it's okay, I'll just sit. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for placing this on the agenda. And Dr. Grit, thank you for your support and positive attitude about looking at a, this particular topic. With, with all the humility that I can muster, but with conviction, what I would like to see is for this board to begin opening its meetings with an invocation or a prayer. The Supreme Court does it, Congress does it, the General Assembly does it, county commissioners, McDowell Tech, and this, this board does not. There's a reason for that, and there's some court cases that, that caused that to be the, to be the case. And I don't agree with the, with the findings of, of those at all. So I asked the question, you know, what is the risk and the liability? And we know what the gain is, I think, of having our meetings opened with, with an invocation. And I am not reckless with the organization or with taxpayers' money at all. But I'm also not afraid to take whatever steps are necessary to do what, what I think is necessary in order for the, for the board to communicate to the community what we're about. And that's really a good sentence for me to say. We're, we're communicating with the community that that, this issue is important and that it's welcome and that it's not locked out. And so we asked the question, I say "we" a lot of times, and it's, you know, maybe it's "I" or maybe it's "we", but we, there was a group of us, and we asked the question exactly that. What, what is the liability of this? And the attorney that was giving the, the presentation said that it's, it's not that unusual. There are counties that, whose school systems open, open their board meetings with, with a prayer. And he referenced several that have been in place for some time and have been, have been defended. So New Hanover County is the, the, what I did, I, I took a policy and switched the names around, corrected a little grammar, of all thanks me correcting grammar, and tightened the, tightened it up just a shade, but it's largely the same, same policy that has been in place in New Hanover County for over a year. I'm going to leave you with two questions and then turn it to Dr. Grit and, and have him, have him pick up on it. Where I was going with this is let's take this policy that's proven and is in place, and let's have a first reading on it and then put it into place next month. Dr. Grit met with, with our attorney and said that this is, is good and this works, and it would be defended. And so I, you know, this is, this is a good thing. But there's another route that we could, we could pursue as well. And again, I apologize for not putting that out sooner, but heard it, heard it today. And that other route would be, one, two things. One, not having a written policy, but simply implementing it, implementing it without, without, without it being in writing. And there's a plus and a negative with that. One, you formalize it, and two, you formalize it. And either one has, has some, some issues with it. Second, and I think much more interesting to the board, is, is, is who leads the prayer. And the, the New Hanover policy has ministers come in, they sign up, as you, you see in front of you. They, they, they sign up, they come in, and prior to the agenda being approved, they lead in what New Hanover County does is a three-minute or less invocation. And it's done by the, the ministers in the, in the county. And I still like that idea. There's another idea which has some merit and needs to be discussed, and there may be many other ideas, although I hope in January or February, we're, we're moving along with this. But the other idea was instead of a, a minister coming in each month and rotating that, it basically rotate with board members. And again, that has some advantages and perhaps some, some dis, some disadvantages with it, and we'll talk about that. So anyways, those are my, my thoughts.
All right. Mr. Abernathy, thank you for bringing that up. And just, just to let the folks know, I'm, I'm obviously in favor of this, of doing this. I did speak with Mr. Campbell earlier about this today, about how we could achieve this. And I think you did a great job of explaining the, the conversation that I had with him. And if, if we have a consensus from the board as, as a secretary, then what I think I could do next would be to schedule a meeting with Mr. Campbell, with the chair and the vice chair, now that we have those folks in place, and be able to start those discussions. And really allow him to work with us to see which direction that, that would work best for, for the board. And, and I commend you for doing this. I mean, this, this is, this is your board. And I think that's important that, that, that you recognize that and you own that, and I, and I'm, and I'm proud to represent that.
I have one question for Mr. Abernathy. Do you believe that since you were county manager for twenty-odd years, twenty-eight years, did they set a precedence? And should we follow the precedence that's already been established throughout other organizations in this county? Would that not protect us somewhat by following precedents of other?
Well, precedent's important. And in fact, some of the court cases reference that you're in a better legal position if you've been doing it, the longer you've been doing it, the more it becomes kind of institutionalized, and it's easier to, easier to defend. So at some point in our past, we stopped, we stopped doing this as a board two years ago, and I, I wish I'd been more aggressive, to be honest with you. I asked the, the chairman about a moment of silence, thinking that that was probably as, as far as the item could be taken. And I maybe should have, should have tried harder or done more. But Mr. Barksdale, precedent is, is important, and we've got institutions that have been, been doing this since their inception.
Thank you. I, if I'm understanding you correctly, Dr. Grit, you're asking for consensus to move forward with this, and I, I'm going to poll the board for consensus for you right now, sir.
Yes, sir. I think that would be the next logical thing to do as far as this goes. And that would then allow the chair and vice chair to sit down with legal counsel and have something to bring back to the group following, following that meeting. I, I just felt like it would be best on, to have the consensus of the board, that that was the direction they'd like to see us move in.
I, I think you're correct. Mr. Suddles, I'll start with you.
Yeah, I'm wholeheartedly in support of it. I just want to also remind us, when you leave this boardroom at night, in my, in my last four years, what I've found out is I find myself going home and having things on my mind, whether it's personnel or something, that I really pray hard about. So I think that's a great idea. But when we leave here, let's don't just let that prayer be what we have thought about. Let's take what we hear in these meetings and really pray over that too, because that's just as important.
Mr. Chairman, most of the actions I take on a day-to-day basis, I start with prayer. So I am one hundred percent for.
Mr. Baker, we know what Mr.-
Mr. Chair, the Apostle Paul, I think it was, said, "The effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man or woman availeth much." And I'm wholeheartedly in favor of it.
I support it a hundred percent because I think it's going to benefit us in the long run.
I agree and, and support this, and also agree with Mr. Suddles. This should be bathed in our own prayers, making sure that we're, we're doing this for the right reasons, and I believe we are.
I absolutely a hundred percent support the motion.
I'd like to thank Mr. Abernathy for bringing this forward. Takes courage, and I agree with you one hundred percent.
Dr. Grit, I think you've got your consensus, and I think you know your directions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any board reports? I, I know we've got the North Carolina School Board's annual conference, and I know Ms. Hales and Mr. Schufert have been passing information to us, and, and I appreciate that. And Mr. Suddles, I know you were there. And we'll entertain anybody that has a report to make concerning board reports.
As far as building grounds, we have nothing, you know, at this point. We're always working, you know, behind the scenes. And, and Dr. Grit, and I'll talk to Dr. Grit and yourself later on about little things. But, so no board reports right now, buildings and grounds. As far as for the convention, it's always insightful to see other educators, some great guest speakers this year with a principal, a former principal and motivational speaker that really opened my eyes to a lot of things to bring back and make sure that we're doing some of those things. So for you new board members, it's definitely worthwhile to go into the future to those.
I found the conference to be very informative. Especially enjoyed the, the young teen entertainers that did some wonderful coral representations to us, but also hearing some presentations on the, on some systems that had really made some major moves and worked really hard, and, and it's paid off for them and liked some of the ideas. And that's part of what I shared. But just appreciate the opportunity to go and represent, be part of the board there.
Yes, I too had, had Ms. Becky send you guys. One presentation in particular was on moving from low-performing school. A superintendent that came in and moved his school from number fourteen to number one in one year. So it was a one-year plan to get your school from a low-performing school. So really good information for you guys to review.
I hate to say it, Donna, you left a little too soon. I went to the North Carolina High School Athletics Association meeting, presentation, and, you know, if I didn't walk away with anything else, I realized how important football is in eastern North Carolina. Not only that, but how they gnaw and gnash their teeth at private schools that, that come out and just wipe them off the face of the earth, and they're not a thing the North Carolina High School Athletics Association can do. But I, I found it very interesting because there are some passionate folks in eastern North Carolina about their football teams. And I hope that, that Dow County, I, I wish they could all have been in that presentation, but I, I'm, I'm hoping we see great things from our own schools in the real near future.
Mr. Frank, it was actually left by design, because I knew that happened. It's going to happen every year. You know, it's, it's almost like that rivalry fight, east versus west. But, you know, it's one of the reasons why we brought that up in, in the changes to the rules to try to abolish private schools from being able to play in the playoffs, which they approved. And I think that's huge. I don't think any private school should be able to play in a public school's playoff system when you're going out to recruit players and I call it gang up, gang up on teams that don't have that opportunity. So when they passed that 1A through 8A, which is going to be the new classifications, I think that was huge and in the right direction. If we're, you know, if we're a 7A, we may not face that now, but some of the private schools are getting really big really quick. So it was better to, to do that. And you always look out after your 1A Western, your Andrews and, and the Pisgahs and of the stick together when you're in western North Carolina. So to help, you know, try to prevent that, that's what we're trying to do, so.
I think other than the closing, closing that meeting, you might have been the only one who got applause. I think folks were really happy to hear that motion that you made, and, and it really does represent high school athletics and, and the public schools. And I commend you for making that motion. And that's certainly not something that's a done deal. It's something that they'll take that initiative and lobby. That's what that's all about. And even if they lobby just to say that the private schools who only have limited amount of students but can recruit from multiple places, even if they lobby to say they have to play in a higher classification, that's a win or a step in the right direction. I think you should be commended for bringing that up, and I appreciate you.
The next item on the agenda, item sixteen, is approval consent agenda. The next item on the agenda, item 16, is approval consent agenda. And I really need to explain this to the new members of the board. Mr. Barksdale, you're very familiar with it, of course, Mr. Suddles. But, Mr. Allison and Mr. Baker and Mr. McGinnis, we have to approve certain things, and we put these things on the consent agenda because it's pretty well common knowledge, and it usually goes without question or any ill interpretation or anything like that, but most of them are overnight field trips, facility uses and things like that, and other things that are just common. Now, however, if you ever look at your board packet and you see something on that consent agenda that you're not real sure about and want to know more information about it, you're going to be allowed to pull that one item out, or however many items you want out, and we'll vote on that separately. Now, what we're going to do is I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is on our agenda. However, I want to remind everybody that if there's an item on that consent agenda that they won't pull and vote it on separately, we'll be happy to do that. So at this time, I'm entertaining a motion to approve the consent agenda, just as it is on our agenda tonight.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schuford to approve our consent agenda, and we have a second by Mr. Barksdale to the motion. Is there any further discussion, or is there anything you want pulled on the agenda?
Just a quick addition to your overview, real important to me. No one else seems to make all that much of an issue of it, but the items have the superintendent's recommendation.
Very good.
And with that, I'm leaning on him so that I don't have to research a travel team going to Virginia. You know? So I'm...
Yes, sir.
And there are a lot of moving wheels in this, and it's just like taking an activity bus out of state. And we have to rely on him, especially your ROTCs, your wrestling teams, and your other teams, to make sure that we're within our rules and regulations to take these buses out of states and things. So we rely heavily on him. And as Mr. Abernathy has said, with that being said, he's not going to let us go down the wrong path, I'm pretty sure. But I appreciate you bringing that out, and I want you, new members, to feel real confident that we have a lot of confidence in Dr. Gritt as well. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. Okay, unanimous. And at this time, Ms. Smith, I need the reasons
I've got you.
we're going into, oh, you got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We need, I need a motion to go into closed session for the following reasons. Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential student information pursuant to 20 USC 11232G, FERPA, and GS 115C 402E, includes student discipline and student transfer releases. And under subsection A1, to prevent disclosure of privileged or confidential personal information pursuant to GS 11, 115C 319-321, includes employee matters. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, we'll go into closed session.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Suddles to go into closed session, and a second by Ms. Helms. Is there any further discussion on the closed session matter? With no discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous, and we'll go into closed session at this time.